I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. All Planning Commissioners are present, so we have established quorum. We don't have any guests in attendance today, so there will be no need to minister an oath. We do have a reporter present. Thank you. There are no cases on the agenda either, and no last-minute adds to the agenda on that item. We do have a couple of communications. One is a discussion on Internet cafes, and particularly concerning gambling at such an institution, as well as we'll have a brief discussion on Planning Commission strategic planning for the next year, or this year that we're in. We'll start with the Internet cafes. Mr. Logue, as always, you lead us into introduction of where you'd like discussion maybe to start with today.
Sure. Councilman Chris Fall last week at City Council did send a request to the Planning Commission that they review and make a recommendation for any ordinances as they may relate to an Internet cafe. I don't know if that formal recommendation has come down yet, but we might as well start working on it. What I've included in your packet there, in the black clip, is several pieces of information about this situation, or about this topic. The first piece, I had, I hand-numbered each, there's four different pieces. There's one, two, three, and four. I hand-numbered them in blue ink. The first piece is from a seminar that was put on by the Akron section of the American Planning Association in December. I was unable to attend the seminar, since it was up in Summit County, but one of the people who put it on emailed me all of the documents from it, and so there's information about what's going on in other parts of the state, also about the legal court case, which was either in Lucas County or the city of Toledo, that did say that these were legal businesses, that they did not meet the definition of a gambling parlor, and so what's happening there. And you can see there's a copy of some advertisements for them that have been popping up in newspapers in northeast Ohio. They're included.
Palmer Heights.
Clearly does not look as if what they're advertising versus what they're doing appear to be two different things, to give you an idea of why a lot of cities are addressing this. And then, at the back end, there was the two larger pieces of paper. Were provided to me as best practices. This is what the city of North Royalton, which is in northeast Ohio, it's a better, older suburb between Akron and Cleveland, that they adopted last year to address this. They had to cover two parts of their code. Excuse me, actually, I believe they only address this in their business codes.
Right.
What other cities have done is address it through their business code, as well as through their zoning code. If you look at what North Royalton did on page two, it would appear as if they might, they may have a different code structure than the city of Athens does, which is why they just covered in their business code, but it does have distance requirements from churches, schools, playgrounds, that type of thing, built into their business code. But the best practice that was identified at that seminar gives recommendations that you covered in business as well as zoning codes.
Okay.
So, other than that, my information on this is not too much more than you guys have, from the information that John and I sent out in December, those links and those articles, and this packet here. And I have, this packet was just sent to me yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to read through the full thing myself.
Okay.
So.
Is this? I mean, I've never been to an Internet cafe of this type. I remember the 90s, when Internet cafes were kind of all the rage, where you didn't have as wide Internet usage at the home.
Right.
And, you know, Wi-Fi has kind of replaced it, where there's no longer a charge, where you don't even need a password anymore typically to get onto a hotspot or Wi-Fi connection at a, you know, a coffee house, so to speak. So is this, I mean, the concept is taking where, you know, some bars have a sort of, you know, a computer-animated arcade game, or poker game, so to speak, and then it's just sort of putting those all over the place? Or is it directly an Internet access, where you're going to Internet poker sites, or, you know?
My understanding is that some of these systems and some of these businesses are set up so that you only have access, if you sit down at the terminal, you only have access to three or four websites. And that's it. Anything, you can't surf the Internet, you can't buy time to deal with your email, to use a Word document. It's not giving somebody computer access like the public library does. Public libraries, you could probably go and play online poker if you want. I don't think they have the right to stop you from doing that. But what these do is they, they call it a sweepstakes as opposed to gambling, and I think the judge's ruling says that there's a difference between a game of skill and a game of chance, and I think a game of skill, or one of the two is not gambling and the other one is.
Right.
Games of chance are probably gambling, I would suppose. But you're limited to four or five websites that you can go to. These websites have like those tic-tac-toe, and they basically would look like a slot machine almost, what you're seeing, or some type of a game like that. And you win the game, you buy minutes on a calling card, and you use those minutes to access the sites. If you score, if you hit the right numbers, the right random numbers, or whatever, they then add minutes back on to the card, and then you can take that card in and exchange it for prizes or cash.
There is.
Or you might lose it all. That's the other issue, that you buy 20 bucks' worth, and five minutes later, your $20 is gone.
Okay. Looking at that, I just started perusing the first document you have, in the Internet sweepstakes cafe. It has on, I think, the third page in the description, device description is what they call it, which is, talks about how they go about doing this. In fact, they actually say there's a no purchase necessary option, because it's technically a sweepstakes. And again, it talks about whether it's gambling or not further in here, because it's, you have to have prizes, you have to have some kind of, what is it, a price, payment or price for a chance to gain a prize. And if any of those things are missing, there's no gambling occurring. That's like page five, six in there, on analysis of Ohio's gambling laws. So, in one sense, it's very hard to actually track these. It's still legal technically to do this.
Right.
And what we're trying to say is, okay, can we actually restrict the locations, or the prevalence of this?
Does that, I mean, I guess, does any of the commissioners feel like the locate, I mean, is this a location issue, or is it a, you know, whole municipality issue? Like, is this something that, I mean, I don't want anyone to, I guess, decide one way or another right now, but go ahead.
Legally, you can't zone anything out of existence if it's legal to operate in the state. So it would be a question of location. You can't have distance requirements, et cetera.
Right.
It's a business, so clearly it can't go into an R district, but you could have, you could say, like our sexually-oriented businesses, there's 1,000 feet from any R district, 1,000 feet from a church, a playground, a school, anything like that, and so you can separate those uses, so you don't have incompatible uses right next to each other, if we deem this to be something that needs to be regulated.
Okay.
I see on the second page of your Section 1 there, talk about some of the zoning regulations. You know, if you look at the bullets that they, this discussion presentation included was traffic circulation issues, parking issues, setbacks in residential schools and daycares, spaces between cafes due to parking and traffic issues. So again, that's probably what we're thinking of, is what the impact is to the neighborhoods if this occurs. I don't know how prevalent this is, it's news to me as well.
Right.
And again, you know, if it's, if it's technically no purchase necessary, game of sweepstakes in there, like any other one, I don't see how they'd survive if nobody paid for it, but.
Right.
So that's why I'm a little confused of the basis of why this works one way and not the other.
I'm kind of confused how it's different than like Split the Pot or something, which is clearly a game of chance, that you have to pay an entry.
Well, for one, I think those are for charities and nonprofits.
I mean, couldn't we just say, these have to be for charity or nonprofit?
I don't know. That would be a business regulation, I think, not a zoning.
Yeah, I mean, not a zoning, that's right.
I think we'd probably have to dig into what the state says. If the state says they can be for profit, then they can be for profit. I don't think Home Rule would allow us to limit that out.
And I think there's distinguishing this from gambling, actually.
Right, that's.
When you say Split the Pot, it is a gamble.
Right.
And there, everything I've read here quickly says it's not gambling, for some reason.
It is a skill.
It falls to the cracks between that. So I'm looking at the numbers, number three and four. These are basic ordinances that were passed, actually, almost simultaneous. One's 10, one 12, and the other one's 10, one 13.
Right.
And it looks like one is actually putting a fee schedule on various businesses that are to be done. And I guess I have to probably review the business code, section of the business code, and it probably would not require us to act on it, but we can, we can move this ahead. The other one is looking at definitions, if I understand correctly, of what amusement devices, and that would be the other limitation.
Are there age restrictions in this as well, as far as the ordinance? I mean, could a teenager go into an Internet cafe and?
I think I saw something where it's 18 or plus.
But it's not gambling, so there really shouldn't be any age issue, correct?
If they sell alcohol, they may be limited by that.
Yeah.
Some of these, I'm sure, have liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses are hard to come by in Athens, though, so I can't imagine new business easily getting a hold of.
Yeah.
It'd almost like change the definition of an Internet cafe that most of us perceive as one.
Right, so it seems like this North Royalton one didn't really go after Internet cafe, just went after devices, so is the, is the concept, so.
Mm-hmm.
You could have an Internet, you could have this in a church, you could, well, I mean, anything that, be something that would be regulated by business regulation.
Nonprofit, again.
Right.
I think at $250 per computer or other game device, they were going after them. The fees are higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For that.
Good time Charlie's has good spirits and good times.
I guess they do have liquor there.
Draft nights, so.
Draft nights, must have liquor there, then.
$2 draft.
Nothing to do with the military.
If you were, if you were terming like gambling, or games of chance, as, say, vices, are there other vices that can be used out of Internet cafes? In other words, can they be used for other purposes?
Such as?
Drugs, prostitution, things of that nature.
I suppose they could. It would be illegal, of course. Be no different.
I guess what you're wondering is, have, are these really what these businesses are about, or, you know? I don't think they've been around long enough.
That part, I don't know. I'm in no place to speculate on that.
All right.
Some of the things I've seen online have been that some of the services that they advertise, actually, they do not offer ATM, or they probably offer ATM, but fax and copy services. Several of them advertise that they provide Internet. They only provide Internet to very limited sites, and issues of that nature, so. Again, I don't know how we want to handle this.
Yeah.
City Council asked for it. I have seen that there's been some significant issues in northeast and northwest Ohio, where these are being looked at as creating slum.
Blight.
Creating a blight, having a blighting impact on business districts, and people are going in there, and if, and police, the police are saying that it appears as if this is gambling. And they're basically creating these mini casinos, and then there's a judge's ruling that said they're not gambling, but when you, the interviews that have been done with people that are going there is that they're going there hoping to win 500 bucks, thinking they can turn their money around or something, 20 bucks in and 500 bucks out. So that's kind of where the issue lies. Our code right now is completely silent on it.
Right.
And so, if we don't think there's a problem, we don't have to do anything. But if we do think there might be something here, it's important to say, where do we think these should go? If you've got 60 Internet terminals on Court Street, is that a problem with parking in a B-2D where you don't have to provide parking for a business district? So if you've got issues like that, we might want to consider.
Does the money stay local?
I doubt it. Depends on who owns the business. The Toledo situations were with a business that was based out of Michigan. There are, I've seen videos on YouTube advertising the Ohio loophole, and telling people how you can set one of these things up in the state of Ohio and make a killing on it. I mean, it's like a 10-minute video of some guy just talking about the loophole in the law, and what you can do if you want to get this set up, and if you need help, he'll charge you a fee to help you get it set up in all these communities. So again, I don't know if it's a big issue. It is a big issue in other parts of the state. The economy being what it is, 10% unemployment, things of that nature may want, people may be looking to gamble in a situation where they otherwise would not. There's nothing in our code that says we can outlaw something if it's legal, but we can try to control the location of it if we think there may be a problem. And like I said, several other cities and areas of the state are having, are really struggling with this, so.
Well, I guess my, I can't envision, I mean, I can definitely envision how this is different than Internet cafe of yore, where it's, you know, like I said, a coffee house with Internet terminals.
Yeah, this isn't a place to jump in and check your email while you're backpacking through Europe. That's not what you need to set up to do.
Right. But what I'm having trouble, sort of, is seeing it how it's different than a bar environment, which, you know, is it, you have to be over 21.
Yeah.
I guess I don't, I just don't see the, how it would look that different, so that's why I wonder if we are going to look at it from a zoning standpoint, do we look at it how we do we zone place establishments that are meant for adults?
I don't believe we can regulate the ages unless the state says we can. Again, I'm really not an expert on this, I apologize.
No, no, and it's not, that's what I'm getting at.
If research needs to be made, then research should be made on it, and I would recommend that the Planning Commissioners check out some of this information. And if, what I'm hearing, I think, is that you don't think there's a problem, you don't think this is something we should work on. And if that's the situation, then we don't have to. We can make a recommendation to City Council, the five of you can, that says you don't think there's anything we need to worry about. I mean, that's an option.
Right.
We don't have to do anything. City Council requested that the Planning Commission look at this. The nuance between an Internet cafe and a bar, it's not for me to answer. I don't know what the difference is. I've never been in one of these things.
Right.
Alls I've seen is that several other communities are having a problem with it. They're saying that there's negative impacts to it. Do we think there's negative impacts from having bars everywhere? The state must, because they do limit the number of permits that a city can have. We do limit the location of them. We don't allow them in R1 districts.
Right.
So we're, if you look at it from that same standpoint, I mean, we could treat it the same as a bar, we could treat it the same as a sexually-oriented business, which we have pretty stringent regulations on, because we don't think they should be everywhere, and we don't want them next to churches and things of that nature. So there's ways you can approach it.
Why don't, yeah, the, yeah, I mean, like you said, we don't, right now, there's no age limit. You know, it doesn't sound like there's any sexual persuasion issue.
It's possible that there is an age limit.
Right.
I really don't know.
Okay.
Paul, I'm looking at your, what you gave us from that APA, and then they have, oh, contents, thank you, but I don't see the related information to that, so I don't know.
That was the agenda for what the speakers were covering.
Oh.
I didn't receive any information on that. That was just their agenda.
Okay.
Because I see they do talk about the parking quite a bit.
Right. Yeah, and those are things we would want to look at.
Okay. Okay, I, again, I read this a while, just earlier, and I remember seeing something in here. Prize reward, anything of value.
Well, I think that's in the Toledo.
That's pretty much defined here by the court.
Yeah.
They're not doing it as gambling.
Yeah. Okay, what I'm looking, in terms of the Royalton, North Royalton here, I guess, I would like to see, if I was going to do anything, I'd probably want to look at what other cities are doing as well. I mean, these look, they look like really they're just making it difficult rather than stopping it.
Right.
They're asking for a definition of amusement device, and adding it as computer games or apparatus. I think when reading that Section 1, when I was going through it, talked about anything of value being actually extended time play on video arcade machines as well, so I'm not sure how that fits in with the non-gambling portion of it. Personally, I probably, I'll have to probably look at the business section, Title IX, is it, I think it is? Is that our section of code? It's been a long time since I've looked at that, so probably we need to review that and see what we don't have. But I'd like to see other sections that are out there, in terms of other ordinances, how they address this.
Our business code is, there's not much in it, is the reality. It touches on commercial business very lightly. There's a few things about carnivals and circuses and things of that nature, which are probably outdated. And the only change that I've seen in that in the last, I don't know, several decades, probably any major change, was when City Council in 2007 or '08 adopted the sexually-oriented businesses. They covered that in zoning and in Title IX.
Contractor registration.
And contractor registration, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't, there's not much we do as far as regulating business near that code.
Well, and what you would say, I mean, we can't, if we were all, you know, to decide that we don't want this in Athens, there's really no way we could do that. We could zone it to a particular area, but that would be the max to us limiting it besides.
Well, you could, if City Council chose, they could, they could adjust the business Chapter IX, and charge fees per terminal, or fees per computer and things like that for this type of, for a permit process. That would be City Council's discretion, not the Planning Commission.
Right.
But yeah.
But as far as zoning's concerned.
The Planning Commission's responsibility would essentially be to work on the zoning aspects of it, if they want to address it. As is, the only, zoning would cover it right now by saying it's permitted, I would assume, in a B-3. But even that, I mean.
B-1 or B-2.
Yeah.
Neighborhood Internet Cafe.
Yeah.
Or most sort of, sort of inclusive zone, B-3, so.
And then it would cover, if there's any parking issues, that would just be covered by general business parking requirements, as it is right now, so.
The other, on the other side of it, the thing we could look at is, is the rezoning for the strip clubs or anything like that, we didn't zone them out, but we made it very limited. I think within 1,000 feet of any park, school, church. It pretty much excluded, you know, good 90% of the city.
More than that.
More than that.
Yeah.
So I guess the question is.
So you sort of created a red light district, then?
Yeah, there are about two portions.
There actually is just a red light at that spot, that's all there.
Mostly it's swamp.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, well, no, okay, is that the approach we want to take? I mean, do we start saying, okay, we don't like this, let's block it out, or do we need more information on what this is?
I think we need more information, because I guess I'm, where I'm, where I kind of was comparing with a bar is, I don't see how a bar could just add more amusement devices, but it's still a bar, like, we would sort of miss the fact that they were doing this change, and it's not a new Internet cafe coming in.
Okay, as far as I know, the bar does not give out anything for the.
That may be why North Royalton just regulated the device instead of the business.
Right.
And so that if you put one of these in a bar, you've got to follow under those rules.
Right.
But the city has no control over like those Kino terminals, at the Ohio Lottery issues, those are in, those are in a few bars on Court Street.
Right.
I guess one way I'd look at it is.
And that's a big, big difference, right?
There's definitely a gray area between, it's clearly a gray area between gambling and not gambling.
Right.
What if the state permitted off-track betting parlors, but allowed communities to determine the proper zoning for it, so long as they didn't zone it out? If the state were allowed, if we were, if somebody were allowed to open an OTB in the city of Athens, where would we want that to be located?
Right.
And if you kind of look at it from a similar.
I mean, which, in essence, is what's happened.
We wouldn't want that here and there, yeah, and that's what other cities are doing. It's, the state has said it's not, or a judge has said that this is not gambling, but the cities are saying that it's having the same negative, potential negative impacts on the community that a gambling parlor might.
Right.
Okay, so I think we should treat it and kind of look at it from that angle.
Okay.
If we want to look at it. That's, that's how I would approach it.
I would say we should look at it. I mean, if Council wants to deal, they're going to come and ask us if they have, I mean, unofficially, they have already.
Right.
So we should at least do our homework on and see, because the alternative is they'll do it, okay? And I have no problem with that, except they'll be just, they won't have as much time to do the homework, I suspect.
Right.
And I can tell you that the sweepstakes system, the sweepstakes system, as described in Farley's expert report, was developed by Frontier LLC. Frontier LLC has contacted me about throwing one of these in town, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern with immediately jumping to the B-3 is, you know, the fact that we, the Planning Commission has been trying to have, you know, part of B-23, part of joint B-2D, so I'd hate for something to go into that area, and then it finally goes through to get re-zoned and it's grandfathered in, so.
And we have a lot of B-3.
Exactly, so. I guess I'd like to put a motion, maybe table a discussion, till we have a little more time to do our own research and read through the packet that.
Is that a motion? I'll take, I'll second that.
Okay. Go ahead. I mean, there's still going to be discussion.
I mean, like I said, I would encourage you guys to look through the information I've given. I'll try to find things from some other cities for you, and we'll email that out.
Okay.
Try to get that for the next Planning Commission meeting, if that helps.
Okay.
Also, check and see what the closest one is, maybe we should, not that I'm a gambler, but the fact is, I don't even know what one of these things look like. I'm told maybe Parkersburg, is that what I'm hearing? But that's another state.
Yeah, I don't know.
Who was it? I don't know either. I don't know, again, I'm trying to wrap my head around what.
Hurts Springfield, I don't know if that Springfield township up near Richland, or this area, or Springfield, Ohio.
By date, isn't it? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor, tabling discussion for this item?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. There's no further discussion on that item, move along to our strategic planning for this year. I'd asked Shar to prepare sort of a review of our past year, cases that we looked at, as well as some of our strategic planning items that we did give some time to discussion. Just turn briefly to the cases, 2010 cases in this blue packet here. We only had six cases last year, I can't imagine that was a very high year for cases, but I think, every single case that did go through the Planning Commission after discussion and feedback with the owners were approved.
Most of them Title 41s, too.
Yeah, all Title 41s, except for a few lots, or I guess one lot split.
You got questions on that? We got some wrong?
I don't think there's more than this.
You think there's more cases?
It felt like there were more cases.
The cases seem accurate.
They may have gone into the year before, if that's possible. I do remember that, and it might have been the last one we brought.
Well, there are a number of lot splits that don't come to the board.
That's probably.
And that's the difference, if it's continuous and contiguous, it's just in a drawing list.
Right, right.
Yeah, these were physical cases on agendas.
Shar would know, so.
Well, it would be of interest to see how many you field without us ever seeing it. I mean, what's the ratio, one to five, one to two?
On lot splits?
Yeah.
On lot splits. I can find out, it's.
Okay. Again, part of, you have this as well, so if there's any discrepancy, or if there's any inaccuracies, you know, let us know, too.
There's probably been at least seven or eight last year that we dealt with that didn't meet the requirements of going before the Planning Commission on betting.
Okay. That's what I figured as well, I just was wondering.
Maybe that's something we could add in your report, is if a lot split does go through, even if, you know, we're not really privy to the information, but I guess just so, you know, it's on the record, maybe? so, you know, it's on the record, maybe?
Yeah, sure. Since we're talking about lot splits, I was, this would have been in my communications, but I, Chuck Hammer from the Athens City County Health Department, I'm going to try to get him to come to the planning commission in February, just on an annual basis, to discuss subdivision regulations and the three mile and the septic and all of that, so that we're always kind of aware of why we're doing what we're doing and our responsibilities. He's doing that up in Nelsonville, I think, this week, and I invited him for either meeting in February, based on his schedule, so...
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Goes along with sort of our meeting of department heads as well, so, thank you. Strategic planning, the next item, we did have a discussion on the responsibilities of the planning commission, duties and bylaws. The big item that was on there was signed task force recommendations, which we'll carry over into this new year, but it sounds like we're getting, you know, very close to coming back on the agenda with Phil, in the form of, we'll bring it into the planning commission, have discussion, and hopefully then go to a public hearing if we can reach some agreement.
While we're talking on that, I can just say that I do have another meeting scheduled a week from tomorrow, probably be our last one, never going to be finalized, and bring it forward at that time, so...
Excuse me. City council requests. We looked at B2D, which was recommended by the planning commission, however not approved by City Council. Old Peach Ridge Road zoning designation, I believe, was approved by City Council. And the zoning code revisions on gardening and chickens, I believe the gardening portion was approved by City Council, but not the keeping of chickens in the city.
Well, I think that's still been tabled, technically.
So there is, so the gardening then hasn't been, or has...
The gardening has been adopted.
It did, okay.
The issue with urban chickens has been tabled, I believe, at council.
Okay. And I think it looks like the last part is sort of a summary of some of the reports that the planner and director of development, code enforcement had provided. Read a few of those, a lot coverage requirements, that was looking at the 60%, correct?
That's on its first reading.
Okay. First reading of City Council, you say?
First reading of its last, last night, yeah.
Okay. Comprehensive plan review, which, have you got new, while we're on the topic of that, are you still looking for new members for the comprehensive plan, because don't you sort of go through a new cycle?
Yeah, we added one member and she, which is the OU professor in the Voynovich School, Anita Frederick, she actually needs to be, we still need to formally do that through City Council.
Okay.
And I'm glad you remembered that, because I asked to be, because I don't, the chair of the committee, Ed Baum and myself, we haven't worked with council yet to get that paperwork done.
Okay.
But she's the most recent person, and she is really good with the metrics and the data collection part of it, and she's, we're hoping to work with her and a few graduate students on a rolling basis to collect a lot more of the data from the, to monitor the progression of the plan and what's being implemented and what's not, and how we're doing on things, establish our baselines, so...
Okay, that does sound useful.
I believe that was the only open seat on there.
Okay. And I know that's something you provided to us, and I don't think we ever gave it a true sort of reading. I think we either got into the signed recommendation or the city ordinance on urban chickens, so to speak, that, I think it was about the same time. So I think that's something we should look at again as your, that committee's review of the comprehensive plan.
Well, that one, we're halfway through a second, a new year, so we'll have another one to you coming up, May or June.
Oh, you are. I thought you were going about every two years on that.
On the reporting?
Yeah, I didn't think you had a report for some time. I thought that was the first one.
We should have given you a report roughly in June of this year, and I think Chairman Ed Baum, I think he presented to the planning commission. It's possible you were out.
Okay.
I'll email you a copy of the plan, if there's a report, if you'd like to see it.
I have a, I know, I still have that copy of the report. I just didn't know if we had given any sort of feedback.
I don't think you did, no. If you have any feedback, feel free to give it.
Well, I guess...
Because by no means a perfect report. We're not going to deny that. We really, we struggled a lot with getting numbers in there.
Right. And that's, again, where your new appointee would hopefully come in and go.
Yeah, we really struggled with that.
Okay, so maybe we should put this on the agenda, or look at the report next meeting if there aren't any cases, and actually put some feedback together.
I would think that's sort of, I mean, otherwise you're just giving a report and it's going into, you know, there, and there's no, there's no point in anybody wasting their time for that effort, so...
We would welcome it, I can tell you.
Okay.
Send it out to all of us again, just to reprimand the pump.
Okay.
It would be helpful if you do that, Paul, to kind of identify where your efforts are placed right now.
That's a good point. Thank you. Contractor registration is now part of the code, or expansion of the business regulation, which...
Which is Title 11.
Oh, is it? Yeah, 11 and Title 31 changes, which are not necessarily our purve again. Telecommunication tower ordinance presentation, that's, again, something we'll probably want to carry over to this new year. Town hall meeting updates, I know you have one coming up in February, correct?
February 1st.
1st, okay.
6:30 PM, at the community center.
And in that same, well, you know, maybe the February, or it sounds like now March with the signed task force still going underway, that we should try to have our first sort of evening public hearing to discuss that. Pedestrian bicycle plans, updates, still being implemented now, I would hope.
Yeah, this was another thing I do have, I had for communications, but since we're talking about it...
Please.
The sidewalk inventory is complete. I've got a copy of the map here. It's also available on the city's website in at least two different locations. If anybody wants to download it, it's a PDF, and I can email it to anybody who wants to see it. It was discussed at City Council last week to determine a methodology following Ohio Revised Code with how to actually do a sidewalk assessment. We're still working through some of the details on that to determine where we would start and issues like that, but City Council seemed to be interested in moving forward with it, and so we should start that sometime in 2011.
And they just started the resolution for necessity last night for the Mill Street area, but they still have to determine the location they want to do for the citywide.
Correct. And if anybody wants a few quick numbers, we did a general assessment, trying to determine whether sidewalks were good, fair, poor, or whether they didn't exist. Of those identified, we did cover what we believe to be every sidewalk that's on a city right-of-way throughout... city right-of-way throughout.
we covered the sort of strategic planning, I'd appreciate it, Paul and John.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you've covered it all.
For my report?
Yeah.
I've covered almost everything, actually. The only thing we didn't touch on yet is I am still in communication with Mark Spezza, who presented to the planning commission two weeks ago or was it in December?
Yeah, December about the sort of Pepsi Rock area.
Correct, right. I have provided him all the information on how the annexation process works and I believe he's meeting with the Cannon Township trustees in early or mid-February.
Okay.
To discuss the portion where a piece of land would be getting released.
Right.
From the county and then forwarded to the city, so. But it's really, the planning commission's responsibility would be to determine zoning.
Right.
And city council would determine whether they want to actually annex the land or not, so. But that's, Mr. Spezza is still working on that.
Right.
We're working with him on that. The other issues I had written down, I think we covered sidewalks, health department coming to planning, town hall on February 1st. I'll just make that announcement again, just for the public. 6:30 PM at the community center.
Okay.
Open forum, talk with the mayor.
Taking this through.
That's it.
Anything else, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that two weeks from today, in all likelihood, that the Tony Ferrian will be in with his case. He has apparently got the parking almost one to one. I think he's down to eight or nine spaces short.
Okay.
And technically, he could probably put those in if he really wanted to. He's just trying to keep them out of the front setback areas, so.
So as a PUD?
As a PUD, yes. He is going to the BZA for his flood variance. The reason he was able to increase this is because he did add that, remember me throwing in that other lot right there? So he did throw that in, but he does have to go to the BZA to get a variance on the flood regulations, so.
What's the, do you know what the variance is that he needs to?
He, Title 25 states that if you're over one acre, you're only allowed half a cubic foot of fill per square foot of property.
In the 50-year flood zone.
In the 50-year flood zone, right. And so he's at 1.02 acres, so he's just barely over, less than the size of this room over. And so he's going for a variance to go, if they were less than one acre, which is two cubic feet of fill per one square foot of property.
I mean, it's still going to get hit, so he'd still be below the, he'd still be in the 50-year flood.
He's still in the 50-year. He just wouldn't, it waives him of the compensation rule.
Okay.
Does he have a number for how much filling he has to put in?
Yeah.
Is that going to be part of the mix?
No, but I think that'll have to be part of the, when he does the actual permits and the application with the estimated fill, I think that's part of the FEMA requirements as well, so. He'll have to, when he gets some numbers shot and surveys done, he'll, that'll be part of his application on the PUD, so. But that should be today, that he should have everything submitted to us and then it'll be, because today's the deadline and he did comment this morning, said he'd have it in today, so.
Okay.
And then also, since I touched on it, there is a BZA meeting next Tuesday, the 25th, that was originally scheduled for two weeks ago that got postponed due to the weather. It's been rescheduled for Tuesday and there are four cases on the agenda and two of those are parking issues, so.
Okay.
It made me think that maybe I'll go back in the last five years and just pull out all the BZA cases and see how many have more parking.
Yeah.
Just kind of fill a ratio on that, too.
I've looked at them for the last 10 years.
Do you?
Okay.
Yeah, you'd already talked to Paul about that, didn't you?
Yeah, because I think I remember us, the planning commission making a request about, I don't know if it was particular, it might actually have been particularly with BZA cases on the parking issue, so.
It's roughly half, roughly half the BZA cases have to do with parking.
Distance or number.
It certainly suggests that maybe there's something in our parking.
Seems like it.
It might not even be the number, it's just maybe where they're allowed or things like that that need to be worked on for parking.
Okay.
All right, so what are the other two cases? Two are parking, two are?
We got the donkey with the, with Chris, I wanted to do the residential above the donkey.
How many, what were the number?
Eighteen, I think.
Eighteen with no parking spaces.
With no parking spaces, but apparently has a lease signed with.
Oh, they'll be deed restricted? Well, that's different.
Mr. McMillan, yeah, that's what his application's for. Instead of deed restricted, it'll be a lease and it's like 258 feet away and its maximum's 250 with Allen McMillan in that parking lot there on Congress. Then we got Tony Ferrian's flood request that we just discussed, Integrated Services on their parking over on Graham Avenue and Taylor Motors needs a variance for their signs that were destroyed in the tornado of September 16, or October, what month?
September 16.
Those are the four cases.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Any other questions for John or Paul? Okay, I skipped item five, it sounds like.
Somebody's here.
Number six announcements in other business, as always, first announcement is that February 2nd is our next meeting at noon here. It's Wednesday, the day after the town hall meeting. Is there any other announcements?
In line with that, I'll be missing both meetings in February.
Okay.
So Nicholas, you indicated you wanted to attempt to schedule an evening one. Do we want to look at March? Of course, we're going to run into spring break time, or April?
I think, yeah, to wait until we find out when the sign.
Yeah, so it may be, we may have to contact Harry to, if it does have to be in March, just to make sure you, that would work for your schedule. Otherwise, we'll, I guess, look for April, depending on these recommendations. And there may be some other item that comes up that will have the evening meeting.
Was the discussion, I forget what the planning commissioners had thought about, was it anytime there's a public hearing to have that at night or is it just an occasional evening meeting or?
I think what we, originally, we were trying to look at going the whole meeting moved to an evening and then when that wasn't going to work out for our bit one, the suggestion was made to have maybe our public hearings be in the evening.
Okay.
So right now, it's public hearing oriented.
Makes sense.
Okay. Any other announcements?